Is my mic on?
I'm not sure.
God.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission to order. So let's do item number one with a roll call, please.
Danielle Henderson, here. Michael D. Martini.
Here.
Bill Houck.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Miki Hazelton.
Here.
John Martini. Darren Price.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Marvin Wright, Jr. John Zimmerman.
Here.
And non-voting members, Harry Fonestock. Thomas Payet.
Here.
Mylin Nagoyan. Cindy Turcheck.
Here.
Ron Penrose. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is number two, public comment. I do have some public comment cards. So I will call Kathy Brandhorse to the podium, please. And Ms. Brandhorse, I did notice that you also had some cards filled out for our non-action items. And so I'll just remind you and the other audience members that we do take public comment during the public comment periods, which for this meeting is item number two and item number 13, and before any action is taken on any action item. So we won't be taking specific public comment on non-action items today. So if you'd like to comment on item number five, six, eight, or nine, you are welcome to do so during this public comment period or at the end of the meeting at public comment under number 13.
Wow, okay.
And thank you very much.
Ah, thank you. Wow. All right. My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I guess I could talk on five. The University of Nevada Reno, the Water Resources Program Manager. I just wanted to let you know the water is being stolen from the Truckee River, and the water is going down. The people who cannot afford to pay for the water, they are moving into places that they can't even afford to pay rent. And so they are stealing water from other people, and especially the Truckee River. And this is the only way that they could get running water inside their home, but they don't live there at all. Oh, my goodness. And so the water has to come from someplace in order for them to get water in their home. And I just wanted to let you know the University of Nevada is having that problem right now. I mean, you could live in an apartment, and then the person next door to you lives in the apartment, but he doesn't have water, so he's going to steal that water from his neighbor. And so the neighbor is going to be complaining that that neighbor doesn't live there, and he is stealing his or her water. So I just wanted to mention that, too. And also, on number six, One Truckee River Project, partnership between Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful and the Nevada Land Trust. Now, that's the problem, Nevada Land Trust. There has been lawsuits because of damages on houses, damages on the apartments or whatever they live in. Now, I lived there, and I've had bullet holes inside my walls, my windows, because they have to shoot down the police officers, they also have to shoot down the sheriffs, they also have to shoot down the U.S. military in order to help us. So the bullets went right completely through my walls and my windows. But as soon as I got up the next day, it was all fixed. So somebody did have the opportunity and the time to put my walls back, my windows back, everything was back in place. And I could not believe who and what would do this, you know, to my home. My kitchen is smaller, and so is my washer and dryer area, that's smaller. Oh, my goodness. But it's still there, my home is still there.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, thank you. And do I have any other public comment at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Drinkwater, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Approval of the minutes, item number four, from the June 7, 2017 meeting. Again, I'd entertain a motion. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Houck. Why am I forgetting people's last names today? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Solero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, item number five, report on the Advanced Water Treatment Technologies Demonstration Project being conducted by the University of Nevada Reno. I will turn it over to Jim Smitherman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have Rick Warner, who will do a presentation to update the commission on this project.
Thanks for coming.
Madam Commissioner, thank you again. This is Rick Warner, I'm a senior engineer at Washoe County, and I'm going to report today briefly on a status update of our Northern Nevada feasibility study on researching advanced treatment technologies for indirect potable reuse or advanced reclaimed water. And on the slide, for those that you can see the presentation projected up, this is a joint study between the University of Nevada, Washoe County, City of Reno, Sparks, this body, Western Regional Planning Commission, Water Planning Commission, and the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. So we have a lot of local agencies looking at some pretty novel technologies in response to some new state regulations that allow highly-treated reclaimed water to be used for potable uses. So I'm going to go through a brief presentation. Madam Chair, I have about 15 minutes. I know you have a large agenda and audience, I can speed things up, let me know if this is about the right time, feel free to kick me along if you like, okay? All right, terrific. So today's agenda, I want to just give a brief status report. This body, through Western Regional Planning Commission, have funded our project in the amount of about $700,000. So we want to make sure we come back to this body, give periodic updates. The contract that was approved that supports this activity is through the University of Nevada Reno. And Christian Pegula is not here today, so I'm going to try to fill in some gaps on some of the work that they've been doing as well. I want to bring us up to speed on some of our most recent activities, and really talk about our most recent, you know, next steps that are very immediate steps. So again, we want to kind of do the framework here, that reclaimed water does make up about 10% of our local water supply. This is highly-treated, effluent from our wastewater water reclamation facilities, it's been used for irrigation and industrial uses for decades, locally and throughout the state and around the globe. But the state, just this year, passed new regulations that advance water treatment technologies to a point where a new category, Class A+, has been introduced in the state regulations, which basically allow for potable uses. The one that we're looking at most closely is for groundwater recharge opportunities or some highly-advanced uses for industrial uses. This is a five-to-six-year project we're looking at, $6 to $8 million to conduct this feasibility study, and this is being co-funded by all those regional agencies I've already mentioned. So again, real quickly, what are some potential uses? Groundwater augmentation, using water in more advanced treatment processes that would go into industrial uses. And also, we should recognize the Governor's drought form last year recommended statewide, looking at advanced water reclamation for other advances in potable reuse and other uses of water. This is snapshot, those dots represent communities around the U.S. that are looking at this type of water use to augment their local supplies. About 50 local projects are in the queue, 50 projects around the U.S. are already using advanced reclaimed water for potable uses. The sort of the gold standard of everyone is Orange County, we've talked about this before. Orange County uses the same processes, using reclaimed water to augment their drinking water supply for augmentation of groundwater, and it actually produces up to 25% of Orange County's water districts, 130 million gallons per day. So very, very big projects, and they've been doing it for decades. So we're investigating this use as advantages to Northern Nevada, and we're going through a process here of a feasibility study, and those are the major blocks. Community outreach, looking at Nevada regulations, of course, those have already been completed. We're right in that middle part right now, we're looking at treatment technologies, we're starting our demonstration projects, we're looking at hydro-geological investigations right now. So we're really into the meat of the project right now, and we're really following along all these other projects, you know, around the U.S., looking at them and studying them carefully to understand their best practices and bringing those forward to our project. We should also say, too, that in addition to all the regional agencies, we are collaborating with independent expert panels to help guide our work as well, so. So this is really the project update we're going to do today. The UNR's scope of work is really to look at the advanced water treatment technologies that are required to bring forth these types of projects. And Dr. Christian Pegula was given a $700,000 contract through this body. This is funding the research, it's funding a lot of pilot and demonstration projects, and we also have sort of local capacity in the form of human capacity being built up with three PhD candidates, including Lydia Perry, who's right in the front audience here. The scope of work that we wanted to update today was Task One and Two, this is the project rationale, and really the treatment technologies that are under evaluation. Task Three is the basis of design for the demonstration projects, and then Task Four is how you bring it all together and operate and test this work. So let's go into jump right into Task One. This is the project rationale work. This is really looking, I think we're all very familiar how we advance projects in Triple Bottom Line, looking at regional impacts on environmental and economic and social benefits. And then what we're doing is we're studying the North Valleys, not as a place of implementation, but just as a subset study area that we can look at very carefully, and then develop some ideas if this type of reclaimed water use would actually benefit our region. Okay? This is the matrix tree that UNR is studying, it's very typical of how people look at social, environmental, and institutional values, and you can see at the bottom, I won't read all these, of course, but you can see the criteria that gets built up to really then develop if this is the right project for the community. Some of those, of course, are health risk, the introduction of a new water source into the community could be very beneficial, but we're going to be looking at costs and other social impacts as well. So far, this is the finding, and UNR has completed Task One at about 95%, we're still taking review comments. Some of these are the big, big topic things, and I'll just address that. Groundwater augmentation, or regionally, nationally, it's called potable reuse, could offer some groundwater benefits, both, of course, in quantity, of course, that'd be true, but also quality. We have some quality issues that by introducing basically drinking water into our aquifer basins could actually improve the water quality. Of course, we're going to be looking at next steps on health risk assessments, and we did find that, of course, capital projects like this are intensive. They are going to be more expensive than just Tumwa drinking water, but nonetheless, the cost of taking effluent to disposal outside of the community, or looking at other options for effluent management are very expensive. So when you look at the total picture, the value of this project is going to be generated by creating a new water source and having benefits of both economic benefits, social, perhaps some environmental, and also recreational benefits as well. Next steps that UNR is recommending, of course, develop a better understanding of the benefits specifically to risk of drought supplies, conjunctive use, deep well depletion, those are the type of things that the agencies will be taking on. We're going to do a little bit more work on the specific health risk assessments, we've done a lot of literature review. Of course, we're going to be continuing this project for the next three years, and part of the, we like about working with UNR is having access to their public health officials, medical school, those resources will come to bear on this project as well. Task Two, we're also at 95% complete, and this was really that UNR team looking at the treatment technologies that are required to take essentially wastewater effluent that we use today up to drinking water standards. It's actually a fascinating topic, but the two methods that the state is allowing use is sort of what they're calling infiltration basins. This is just putting water, subsurface, shallow basins, ponds, letting the water percolate over time. The real treatment is occurring in the soil aquifer treatment over time. The more advanced topic that the, actually, the state regulations allow is to take highly-treated reclaimed water, send it through advanced water treatment. Actually, that's the title of today's program, of course, is researching these advanced treatment technologies, what it really takes in treatment to allow water to go directly for aquifer recharge. These are the trains, treatment trains that have been identified, I won't read through these, but these are all, of course, advanced treatment, but they do work, they're employed, deployed around the world, it's very common to see these in water treatment technologies, sand filtration, coagulation, UV disinfection, granular activated carbon. So these are all technologies that are readily available that could meet the state regulations for A+ water, the ability to use water for groundwater augmentation. So it's very exciting that UNR has gotten this far. This is where we're all right now, we want to do our demonstration projects. So these are projects not in a bench scale, but actually going out into the field, deploying things at a scale that we can actually put water into the ground, measure over time, do monitoring and modeling, working with the state to kind of prove up all of this stuff. And these are demonstration projects, and we're right at this phase now to do the basis of design for both the infiltration study and the direct injection. All right? Coming later, we'll be actually developing plans with the state to do a monitoring and sampling plan, this is probably at least a year out. Kind of switching gears to the current activity, we are very fortunate to receive a Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant in the form of $150,000 federal grant that Washoe County is going to be the matching agency. This is going to be looking a little bit further. As we develop this project, there's some questions that are kind of coming up. How is this new water source going to be permitted and water-righted? Is this going to be disruptive? Are we going to have to do a water markets evaluation before, if we implement this project, what would happen to the water market? So we're going to be doing some other work, and we're very fortunate to get this Bureau of Reclamation grant. This is about 18 more months in advance, so this will be really beneficial to the region as well. Just very quickly, and that's why Lydia Perry is here, that we're also building up our human capacity. Lydia has won a scholarship very recently that allowed her to go to Hampton Roads, Virginia. They are sort of a sister agency developing a project that's very similar to the one we're looking at, and Lydia was able to spend two weeks at that utility embedded with their folks, looking at the same type of things we are. So we're trying to build up our capacity locally as well. And the team just went down in Long Beach a couple, I guess last week we were there, did all the same similar presentations, we had all the UNR's PhD students, project was very well received by our colleagues and experts as well, and I would say that we got great recognition by our approach, utilizing UNR and doing this as a regional project really gets people excited. Our next steps is really preparing for these demonstration projects, this is kind of like wrapping up all this technology and actually doing something out in the field, being able to measure where the water is going and making sure that a water right is actually created, that we can recover that water. We're going to bring back our independent expert panel to give us some more advice. We are continuing with pilot testing, and that's a whole subject matter, that we've got a pilot test right now going out at our South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, the one down in the south area of town, that's in collaboration with the Research Foundation, also StanTech. And I know Jeff Curtis is in the audience, too, and he's actually leading that effort for us, so very excited. And the Bureau of Reclamation grant work will be starting up very soon. So we're still about two years into a five-year project. Now, I hope that all of you, this effort of bringing all these agencies together has been really, I think, pretty creative and wonderful. We've gotten great results, I don't think any one agency in this area wanted to take on something as big as looking at Class A+ water and what to do with it. It's been a terrific model, and actually, we're going to take it the next step now, where Nevada Water Innovation Campus is created on the University of Reno campus, and all these founding agencies, Reno Sparks, Washoe County, are going to be founding members. So it's not just the technologies that we're looking at today, but we look at stormwater next, maybe nutrients in the river, it's really going to be exciting. And I know that all of you should be invited by now, if not, next week, we'll receive a formal invitation, but our kickoff reception will be August 24, up at the UNR's campus. Okay, so with that, Madam Chair, I hope I didn't extend my time too much, but I appreciate the opportunity to give an update, and I think Jim and I have said maybe every three to six months for the next few years, we'd come back and provide an update, because we're very grateful of the funding and your support as well.
Well, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate your time as well and the updates. Do we have any questions for Mr. Warner while he's here?
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Price.
Rick, for activities, you said that you feel that the Nevada regs are good, we're given the regs now, we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, the regulations at the state, Mr. Price, were adopted, I think it was November, and then they're formally adopted in place in February this year. So almost a year and a half effort that NDP led, and we had agencies from the north, southern Nevada, and several departments within NDP and the state participated, and about a year and a half process to get the regulations in place. So they are, they are set.
And then the other question I had, I know there's potential to go over, but I'm just thinking regionally, how would something like this affect the return factor that we have to have back to the river?
That's a, that's a great question, it's complex, because right now, I think the regional team is looking at sort of the outlined closed basins as potential areas. If we did develop, again, this is a feasibility project, but if the project were ever advanced in the future, you know, some of the benefits you might look at in sort of the outlined basins could be that we don't have to import water, you actually have then a locally-controlled source, that if that basin is receiving Truckee River water at present, that Truckee River water could be allowed to do, you know, to another use.
So, and that will be identified further down the line?
Yeah, that's a great question, because they're starting to come up right now, and in fact, if you recall, one of the sub-bullets of the scope of work for the Bureau of Reclamation grant that we just received would be looking at, you know, essentially you're creating a new water for, for other uses, right? Right now, it could be just effluent disposal, or it's just going, percolating in the ground for no benefit. But if you actually create this source that's, can be returned back to the community, you create a new water that you want to account for the water right and the water markets, how you're not going to, you're going to introduce this water, you don't want to be disruptive in a way.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe the majority of the water at Tumwa, it was Truckee River water, and then there's a return factor associated with Truckee River water, and that it would be imported out into the other basins. And what we do, because we also have a limited water rights bank.
Yeah.
Or market associated with that as well.
Yeah. Very complex question, yeah.
And then my last question, because I was trying to remember, if some amazing technology comes out of this, who owns the intellectual property? Will some portions of, say, a profit come back to this community?
I think I remember the question, and I don't know if we addressed it at the time.
If you spend $700,000, you know, on the investigation of, you know, the research, and let's say they make $7 million, will some portion of that money come back to this community for its initial investment in the year of this going to work?
Yeah, let me return back, maybe if Dr. Pegula was here, I think he addressed this last time by saying this is really public domain type of work, it's getting public money, it's a public institution, sort of, and we didn't expect a patent on something, that we're trying to apply technologies that are readily available, but do it in an innovative way so the community can benefit. So I think it's more about knowledge capacity and building up our institutions more than it is a product we'll sell, but I think Dr. Pegula could answer that.
I'd be interested, because I've heard the same story on UV. UV originally, when they were investigating those technologies, you know, it was going to be one of those things, but people were making money on it, on the UV technologies, which is one of the latest ones. So, again, I just think if some money's made, I'm sure UNR probably want a piece, and it's nice to see some of that money come back to this community as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could follow up, I don't think the inter-local agreement specifically dealt with the eventuality of a saleable product being developed, I think it was more of ways to use existing technology that would be available to all of the public entities who have contributed, but that's an issue to look at in the future when we renew the contract, and I will make a note on that, and then we'll, we'll follow up with Dr. Pegula also. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Darren.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay. Well, thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it, and look forward to your next report. Yes, and that, too, the reception. Okay, sounds good. All right, well, moving on to item number six, a report on the One Truckee River Project, a partnership between Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful and the Nevada Land Trust to coordinate existing efforts and identify priorities for new efforts for long-term management and sustainability of the Truckee River. And I will turn it over to Christie, and I, your last name.
She is fine.
I know how to say it. I'm having a problem with last names today. And Linda.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Roman Henderson, I appreciate it, and esteemed members of the council. As many of you may recall, we were here a couple of years ago now, I believe it was towards the end of 2014, when we, Linda and I, were working together in partnership, Nevada Land Trust and Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, looking at ways in which we could improve the health of the river. And we came to this group, and I need to also recognize staff, because staff's been amazing to work with, thank you so much. But we came to this group, and we said, you know what, we need to put a plan together for the river, we need funding to make it happen, and you said, yes, we will provide you $22,000, which gave us seed money to secure funds from the Truckee River Fund, which got this tremendous ball rolling that has now engaged more than $500,000 for the community. So thank you so much for entrusting us with this project. For those of you who are not familiar with the One Truckee River Management Plan, the funding that we initially secured back in 2014, 2015, we used to hire a consultant, we put an RFP together, we interviewed several consulting firms, incredible consulting firms, we ended up going with CFA, who had put together a team of facilitators and experts in homelessness and funding for the future, and this team helped us engage more than 130 stakeholders in the community that identified nine issue areas that related to the river. And for those nine issue areas, we have this very attractive fold-out that we have passed out for you, so there's the nine issue areas there along the bottom. And these nine issue areas eventually correlated into four key goals that you will see here on the inner fold-out, these are the four key goals that we identified for the Phase One Management Plan, which extends from West McCarron to the Glendale intake. And this Phase One Management Plan, we finalized putting it together in the summer of last year, and I am thrilled to report that it was unanimously approved by the Washoe County Commission, City of Reno Council, and City of Sparks Council in September 2016. So unanimously approved by all three local jurisdictions, we had over 130 stakeholders, and now we are working on implementing, and Linda's going to talk more about that. What I want to make sure that you are aware of is that we are working to organize for success. As you know, this was an effort that was primarily driven with, through a partnership between Nevada Land Trust and Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful. And while we are not in the business, we don't want to create a separate nonprofit, we do want One Truckee River to survive on its own. we do want One Truckee River to survive on its own as a collaboration. And so, we have been working with key members of our core team to identify different possible working mechanisms for the future of One Truckee River that would allow Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful and Nevada Land Trust a seat at the table, but would not necessarily leave us as the leaders of the effort. Because, as we have said from the beginning, the Truckee River is bigger and far more important than either of our agencies even combined. And so, we want this effort to live on beyond us, beyond us as staff, beyond us as organizations. The Truckee River needs to be healthy and whole for the long term. And so, we actually have a recommendation that we're going to be bringing to our core team next week for organizing for success, and we're looking to implement. We are also looking to secure additional funds in which we can hire a watershed coordinator for the One Truckee River group, that crew, that can facilitate this effort. And we actually are going to be applying for some 319H funds through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. And one of the things that we are going to be potentially looking for, so Jim, expect a phone call, is potentially a match. We're not looking for cash match, we need some in-kind match for these funds, for those of you who are familiar with the 319H grant. So, I will go ahead and pass the mic over to Linda, because she wants to talk more about some of the on-the-ground projects that we're doing.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Linda Nelson. I'm the Natural Resource Specialist with Nevada Land Trust, and thank you for the time we have with you today. As Kristy mentioned, the plan was adopted. What she might not have mentioned is that with that plan, we had 122 strategies. We had the four main goals. We had a lot of objectives under those goals, but what you're not seeing there are all of the strategies. I have those in a separate little book here that is also on our website, onetruckeryriver.org, as well as the final plan. And I just gave a copy of the final, a very large plan, to Jim. But that is on our website, as well as just this smaller version that has all of the action items. So, that's what I'm going to be talking about a little bit today. One of the first things that we hired for AmeriCorps, we got funding to hire for AmeriCorps, and they are going off payroll next week. So, we've had them for a year. They did 1,700 hours each, all on the One Truckee River Project. They're fantastic interns. I wish they were here today so I could thank them for all of their hard work. But a lot of what I'm talking about today is going to be as a result of their work. So, Nick was able to go ahead and put together a watershed survey that hopefully many of you were noticed about, that many of you took. We got respondents from over 1,200 people in the community. I have the preliminary results for that survey. I don't have the final results. I will get the final results to you and also have them on our website. But I can tell you a little bit about that survey. We asked people in the community all kinds of questions. We wanted to know what their cultural practices were with the river, with water. Did they know what a watershed was? Where do they get their information? And so, we have some very interesting results. We found out that most people don't know what a watershed is. So, we have some videos that we started working on for PSAs. We found out that most people do wash their cars in car washes, they don't wash them on the street and go into the storm drains. They get their information from the radio, from Tomwa, they said they got them from Bill inserts, they get them from social media. But we also found out that we have a lot of work to do, that there is a lot of work being done in this community with youth education for some amount in watershed, but not so much on adults. And there are groups doing some of that. But we will be summarizing those results, and I'll get those to you. So, right now, I just have the preliminary results for that. The second thing that another AmeriCorps, and this is AmeriCorps Meg Parker's working on, is she put together a teacher resource education guide as part of her, this was sort of a preamble to her watershed education plan. And what I wanted her to do for that is I said, look, before we understand what's happening with watershed education in our region, we need to know who's doing watershed education. So, this right here is a two-page guide that, again, will be on our website. I'll get it to you, so you can hand it out to the Commissioners. And it summarizes 17 different agencies that are doing watershed education in our region. This guide will go to the Washoe County School District, we're working with the Science Coordinator, and it talks about nature conservancy, it talks about Sierra Nevada Journeys, it talks about Tomwa, it talks about Truckee Meadow Park Foundation, KTMB, what they're doing with Watershed Warriors, Nevada Land Trust. It talks about all of these different groups, the target audience, and what the watershed curriculum is that they're doing. So, it's really a resource for the teachers, and that's what we'll be providing to them. So, this is not formatted yet. As I say, we're down to the wire, we've got a week left with all these guys, so we're trying to crunch everything in. I will get that to you. But that is the teacher resource guide. The second thing that Meg will be and is working on and finalizing is this watershed education plan. It's a huge effort to take sort of what we've learned about who's doing watershed education in the community, and then address where the gaps are. And so, we have a lot of suggestions in terms of educating our community about the watershed, in terms of storm drains, in terms of BMPs, adult education, I've mentioned is a gap. Pet waste, E. coli in the river is a problem. So, we've been doing tabling events, talking about storm drains, talking about watershed, talking about pet waste. And so, there'll be a lot of that sort of material in there. We didn't go into a lot of groundwater education in this guide. It's mostly surface water. But that will be, our hopes with the watershed education guide is that we're working with the source water planning people, and that this watershed education guide will fold up into the watershed management plan. And so, we're working very closely with NDEP on the Source Water Protection Plan and the Watershed Management Plan that will go under contract soon. Another thing that's up on the screen here that AmeriCorps Emily Ulrich is working on is what is a photo guide for teachers of the Truckee River, plants, wildlife, insect life, and I don't know, do I control that up here? Oh, okay. Very good, okay. Okay, so here we go. So, just an 18-page guide of plants, wildlife, insects, and mammals on the Truckee River. It's a guide to get teachers and educators on the river and have a resource guide of which to work with. We identify all of the noxious invasive species on the river, as well as most of the native species. And what I did was just kind of put a sampling in here of the first three or four pages. But that will be a complete 18-page guide that we will, again, house on the One Truckee River website. We will get it out to the Washoe County School District and all educators there. The other thing that Emily Ulrich has been working on is two things, and one, I'm hoping, and Jim and I were both hoping today that it will work for us, is we put together an Esri Story Map, if any of you are familiar with ArcGIS. We mapped the Truckee River. We've been mapping the Truckee River for baseline. Oh, good, there it is. And so, we mapped the Truckee River for invasive species. And when Kristy mentions the Phase One section of this planning effort, it's really Mayberry Park or Western Reno to Vista. It's a 12-mile section that we have been concentrating on. We hope to do planning downstream and upstream, but right now, we've concentrated on that area. So, within that region, we've mapped all of the amenities on the river, all of the signage, the picnic tables, the benches. We've mapped, I've mentioned invasives, we've looked at ecosystem health. And so, now, we've put that together in this Esri Story Maps. And let's see, Jim, if we, I don't know who's controlling it. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. If you can go up to, right underneath the watershed map, just underneath that, yeah, and then there's a live link right underneath the watershed map, and that's one of our first videos. If you click on that, we've embedded some of our watershed videos within this. And then, if you can click on that first one, we'll see Meg. I don't know if there's a volume. This is a video of her talking about what is a watershed.
Lake Tahoe and Pyramid Lake all flows towards the Truckee River. And the second is that you can make a difference, whether that's by picking up your pet waste, enjoying the river, leaving no trace, and educating others about why they too should care about the Truckee River.
Okay, so that was a quick one about, the first part, she was talking about what is a watershed, and that you live in the watershed, and we're all part of the watershed. The second video, and I'm sorry for the complication, if you can scroll down just a little bit into that paragraph, there's another hot link, and this one's about car washing. The one that says, yeah, right up there. Thank you so much. There it is, there's the car washing video. Thanks for your patience on getting us.
Warmer weather means that more people may feel inclined to wash their cars outside, which not only wastes our water, but also pollutes our water with chemicals that run off directly into storm drains and directly into the Truckee River, which is our main water source for Washoe County. Every time you wash your car on a road, driveway, or paved surface, polluted runoff may flow down into storm drains and into the Truckee River without treatment or filtration. So, make sure you bring your car to a certified car wash that conserves our water by recycling the water that they use, but also preserves our water by keeping storm water and polluted chemicals out of our storm drains. By washing our cars responsibly, we can each do our part to conserve and preserve the Truckee River.
Okay, and then we have one third video, which is on pet waste. And so, that's further down in the body of this. So, I'll just explain a little bit here. This part of the Story Maps, and generally, this was, if you haven't worked with Esri and ArcGIS, this is really designed to look at on a desktop. And so, you can either click on the photos below, the thumbnails of the photos below, and it'll take you to the place on the map where that is. And what this is, is a Truckee River watershed tour. So, it starts at Lake Tahoe and ends at Pyramid Lake, and thank you again for your excellent navigation skills. So, you can just kind of click through that, and it talks about that section of the river. If we're talking about fly fishing, or we're talking about certain things, we've provided hot links on that caption of that photo, so that folks can get more information on that. And so, then, to do the rest of the strolling, you just have to hover over the picture. Yeah, hover over that picture and then scroll down. And then it'll, and then just hit your scroll bar down, and it'll take you to the stuff below it. There you go, yeah. So, then we have recreation, and this is a map that folks can click on to understand where all of the recreational opportunities are for hiking, walking, kayaking. We have on the map river hazards, dams. I know we've worked with Tomwa, they just redid some of their maps, we've got that information incorporated. We talk about river safety, and then just amenities and recreational opportunities on the river. And then, this is, again, more recreation. There's a picture of Janet on the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way, where we really are trying to get more people out on the river recreating, caring for the river, becoming river stewards. We talk about the biking, the hiking, the kayaking, fishing, a lot of those types of things. And then, I think the last piece of the Story Maps is river safety. And on this part, I wanted to spend just a minute here, because we just installed two loner life jacket stations. We partnered with Nevada Department of Wildlife, as well as the City of Reno, and these loner life jacket stations are the first on the Truckee River. Truckee River Fund helped pay for these. We have 240 life jackets, only 14 at a time go out. One of these life jacket stations is at Wingfield Park, the other one is at Chrissy Collin Park, and they're a great success. People are actually putting the life jackets back there at night. Truckee Meadow Fire, as you know, also placed some life jacket stations there, and some of the orange ones on this rack are the Truckee Meadow Fire stations, jackets that went in. They have, I think, about 10 emergency stations placed along the river. These will actually be permanent stations, they're loner life jackets, and they seem to be a popular event, so we're happy about that. And then, the next thing I wanted to show you underneath this is the mile markers. And this is a copy of them. We have these currently every tenth of a mile throughout Reno, and we'll be placing them this fall, every tenth of a mile in Sparks. And we worked with the City of Reno Fire Department and the City of Sparks Fire Department on this project. It's really a river safety project, but obviously, the folks walking, hiking, biking the river, enjoying them, they're every tenth mile, they talk about, the river mileage starts at zero at Lake Tahoe and ends at 120 at Pyramid Lake. So, our goal is to have wherever we can, these mile markers in place. If folks have, see someone in trouble on the river, they can get to the nearest mile marker, call 911, and give them the number, in this case, 506 or 508, and that's mile 50.8. So, those have been pretty popular, and so far, they're still in place. So, that's a good thing. So, let's see, I'll continue to scroll down here. We talked about river safety. This is Ambrose Park, where we have the concrete dam structure still there, and we talked a little bit about that. Then we go on to amenities, I've mentioned that. Another map that you can click on the pictures, it takes you to the map and shows you how you can scroll around in there. And on this one, we'll just keep scrolling down past this one, that's kind of a live shot. And here it is here. Here's another sort of amenity tour, that you can, again, click on the thumbnails of the photo, and then it'll show you where you are on the map. And then, the last part of this Esri map, after the amenities tour, is the Plants and Wildlife Guide. So, the, and there it is there. And it's the same idea there, that you kind of get a sense of where some of these plants and animals are occurring on the river. So, that's sort of a quick look at Story Maps. A couple of other things that we're working on, let's see, I guess Kristy talked about next steps. We also have in place some funding to do the, start the planning effort for Phase Two and Three. Phase Two would be from Vista to Pyramid Lake. Phase Three of this planning effort would be from where we left off at Mayberry Park to the state line. We do have about $75,000 in place from State Question One, set aside to do that planning effort. And then, we also have some planning effort to do a master signage plan of the river. Now that we've got all those signs and amenities mapped, we can look at a signage plan and trying to implement what's called a Take Care Campaign. We're working with the Tahoe Fund, Amy Berry, and she's got a beautiful stewardship and education campaign at Tahoe called Take Care that we'd like to implement if we could along the river. And so, we'll be working with the jurisdictions on that. But anyway, we've had a river stories contest and a river photos contest, so getting the community engaged about the river, telling stories, taking photos of the river. And so, I think that's, you know, we've been busy. We've got some other stuff, but I'll leave it at that and see if you guys have got any questions for Kristy or I. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions from the Commission? No?
You guys tired?
All right. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Yeah, the website looks great. We really appreciate all your efforts. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for your support.
All right. Moving on to item number seven. Report on the analysis of historical precipitation data collected by Washoe County. Discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve a proposal from the Desert Research Institute for continuation of the regional precipitation monitoring project in an amount not to exceed $20,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund, and possible direction to staff. And I will turn this over to Chris Wessel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, this was continued from our last meeting. We had not received our report yet by Dr. McAvoy with regards to his proposal to do some QAQC evaluations of the precipitation can data that was collected over the last 15 to 20 years. And so, he's here today to provide you with the presentation on that, on his analysis. And just as a reminder, we are looking for action on this, as the proposal for next year's monitoring is, part of this is basically the request for today. So, but that'll leave it with Dr. McAvoy.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chris, and everyone else, for having me here today. We also have Greg McCurdy, who is another major part of this project. He conducted most of the operations and maintenance, and I conducted the analysis. So, today, I'm going to be presenting some of the results from the analysis and some recommendations for the future of the project. But I wanted to initially start off by showing what the tasks were from our previous year's contract that ended June 30 of 2017, so it was a year-long contract. The one major task was taking over the network monitoring and maintenance, which Greg led that part of it. And then, the second part, which I led, was the analysis of the historical data. And so, I'm going to be focusing primarily today on the comparison of the network data to some gridded data, specifically the PRISM data, and how this data can potentially be used for future applications. Let's see here. Okay, so I wanted to start off by giving everyone an overview of this network. So, the Washoe County Rain Gauge Network currently consists of 78 stations, and these were all installed between 1998 and 2006, I think primarily by Win Ross. Chris can correct me if I'm wrong on that. So, he originally installed those and maintained and operated those, and we just took them over for the last year. over for the last year. A lot of the stations have nice 15-plus-year records, approaching enough data to have almost a climatology for some of these stations. They're all pretty basic, standard rain gauges, storage gauges. Also have some pictures here, a few minutes, to show you what these gauges look like. They're emptied approximately twice a year. These are all manual gauges, where you have to go out and collect the measurements manually, empty them before they fill up. So they're emptied typically once in the fall before the wet season begins, then again in the spring or the summer, depending on when access allows, due to, you know, heavy rain and snow. And so they're located in a number of the hydrographic basins throughout central and northern Washoe County. Here's some pictures of the gauges recently. Thanks to Chris Wessel for providing these pictures to me. These are two from Lemon Valley. You can see they're really, they're really basic PVC pipes. They have screens on them to prevent debris and animals from getting in them. And yeah, they're really basic. They just sit there and collect rain, and then, twice a year, they go out and collect the measurements and empty them when they get close to being full. Here's a couple other shots. This one's from Cold Spring Valley, and on the right is actually a one that's slightly different from Virginia Peak, that's been around for a long time. This gauge has seen maybe better days. You can see the wind, that's a windshield there to prevent undercatch of the precipitation. But this is another gauge that was part of the network and is included in the, included in the analysis. So I just want to give you a sample of what this data looks like. So for a long time, Wyn Ross had this data, and none of it was digitized. He put it all together in these nice, this nice digital format, which I've shown here. This is an example from an Antelope Valley station. And so there's a few key elements here that are really valuable to these long-term measurements. So what he has done is, initially was, for each time he goes out there, for each station, is the measurement start period, the measurement end period, and then the total amount of precipitation that fell, and of course, the number of days in the period. And so with this type of information, this detailed information, we can then go and compare this data to other commonly-used data sets for spatial estimates of precipitation, like PRISM, which I'll explain about here in a moment. So this is just an example of what some of this data looks like. This is actually hot off the presses. This is from this previous winter that we had, 2016, 2017, which was an exceptionally wet and, in some places, record-breaking winter. And so these are just some of the observations that Greg and Chris helped collect a little bit, from the four different basins. And you can see, you know, basically, as you go further north, Smoke Creek and Duck Lake Valley, it was a bit drier, but still in the sort of, you know, 10 to 14-inch precipitation range. And then as you go further south, to Antelope Valley, Cold Spring, Lemon Valley, to Bedell Flat, there was quite a bit more precipitation there. Some of those gauges were recording 18 to 20 inches of precipitation or more. I think the highest amounts were down in the, I don't know if this is going to work here. This is a laser pointer. It's hard to see, but Peavine Peak down here had the highest measurements that were over 20 inches. So a very, very wet winter this year. And so this is an example of how we can potentially display this data as it comes in, in near-real time, if some type of webpage were developed to actually showcase this data, so the public can go and actually see what's going on out there. So I want to talk about the comparison to the PRISM data and the analysis that I did. So some of you might be familiar with PRISM, others not. So PRISM is the Parameter Regression on Independent Slopes Model. It's a very commonly-used model to come up with spatial estimates of precipitation, particularly, it's often used in regions where there's not a lot of observations. But the thing with that is that the whole PRISM model is driven by weather station observations. And so typically, if there's more weather stations in an area, the PRISM data will probably be more accurate and reliable. And so this is a, the spatial estimates are on a 4-kilometer by 4-kilometer grid. You can actually see the grid cells and how big they are there. So what I'm showing here on the left there is the average annual precipitation from PRISM, from 1981 to 2010. And this is overall Washoe County, and you can see the different hydrographic basins there. And so basically, and on the right is the digital elevation model, or the terrain that PRISM uses in their model. And it's fine enough resolution that it does do a decent job of resolving most of the mountain ranges in Washoe County. But one thing I want to point out on the left is, so what that's showing basically is that what PRISM is saying is that, you know, the valleys are going to be much drier, and the mountains are going to be much wetter, which you might expect. So if you go up somewhere like the Sierra Nevada, much bigger mountain range, you typically see this increasing in precipitation with elevation. But we don't really know much about that in some of these smaller mountain ranges that we have east of the Sierra Crest in Washoe County, so I'll be talking a little bit about those results. So what I did was, you know, I found the PRISM grid cell that was closest to each one of those 78 network stations, took all that, matched the data for using the number of days and the dates there, and looked at the biases and the correlations between PRISM and the network data to see what they look like. And one other thing I wanted to point out about PRISM, so this is a map here showing the PRISM control points. So each one of those green dots is a weather station that is used in the PRISM model to generate these spatial estimates of precipitation. And what do you notice there? Basically, in Washoe County, once you get north of Peavine or Pyramid Lake, there's essentially nothing. So they're using all those surrounding stations to generate these spatial estimates of precipitation in Washoe County, but there's really no observations in that part of the county being used. Now, when you add in the network location, you can see it really adds this great spatial density of precipitation observations to the county, which could be very valuable for a number of reasons, which I'll describe later. But, so PRISM and other less sophisticated models, like the Hardman maps that were generated back in the 60s or 70s, these are commonly-used products that are used in Washoe County basins for very important applications, like perennial yield and groundwater recharge estimates. So keep that in mind as I go through these, this analysis, showing the results compared to PRISM. So this is a bit of a busy graph, but I'm going to go through it, explain it, explain it all, and point out the highlights of this. This is some statistics showing the comparison of PRISM to the network. The top row is showing the biases, which is essentially looking at, you take the PRISM data and subtract it from the observations, and see if PRISM is wetter or drier than what was actually observed. And the bottom row is looking at the correlation, or the R squared, which is showing how well PRISM is capturing the actual variability of what was observed in the Washoe County network. And so the biases up on the top row are expressed as a percent difference. And as you go across from left to right, the furthest left is all the data together, the wet and the dry seasons. But then I also separated it out into just the wet season, or October through March. And then on the right is the dry season, or the, you know, spring and summer, April through September, to see if there's any sort of seasonal signal showing up there. So if we focus on the top row, and each one of the dots represents one of the stations, and they're color-coded by the different hydrographic basins. And then on the x-axis, going from left to right, they're plotted against elevation, because I was also looking to see if there was any relationship to these statistics to elevation. So, and on the bias plots there, we have those dotted lines at plus or minus 20%. Anything in between those lines is considered sort of a reasonable bias, not an incredibly large bias. Anything outside of that dotted line is sort of considered a large bias, or really big differences between what PRISM found compared to what was observed. And so in general, there's a lot of large biases showing up in PRISM. In some cases, up to plus or minus 100% difference. So PRISM is either a lot wetter or a lot drier. And, you know, when you look at the top left, when you have the seasons together, there's not a huge pattern that stands out. But when you break it into wet and dry, you notice that during the dry season is where a lot of the dry bias is coming from. So during the summer, PRISM is really underestimating what is being observed, and more so in the winter, PRISM is overestimating than what is actually being observed. So when you move down to the bottom, look at the R squared, look at how PRISM represents the variability. Overall, it does a decent job representing the variability. Anything in that top, top sort of quadrant there, 0.8 to 1, R squared, is a decent correlation. And again, when you look at all the data together, wet and dry seasons, PRISM does a decent job. There are a few stations where the R squareds are still quite poor, 0.2 to 0.4, not a very good relationship there. Then we break it out into the seasons, the correlations kind of fall apart a bit more. So the key things here is PRISM. It generally represents the variability pretty well, but there's very large biases showing up in different seasons. Okay, one more, one more busy slide of results here.
Could I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So the prior slide that you just had up there, there's huge variability there in the totals on the far left, right? The far left is all seasons, is that right?
Right.
So it looks like one of them's wrong. Right?
You mean the observation or PRISM? Well, right.
I mean, by a lot. It looks like by a lot.
Yeah, up to, up to...
The data's wrong or something.
Right. And so we tend to, we tend to trust the observations more than the model. There is some uncertainty, of course, in the observations. But we tend to think that the observations would be more representative, especially because there's no observations in that part of the county that are being used to generate PRISM. PRISM really has no idea.
You're saying the actual rain gauges that are installed out there as opposed to these PRISMs, that look like most of them are in California anyway.
Right. There was nothing near, you know, Dry Valley or Smoke Creek or anything like that. But PRISM is used very heavily in that part of the county.
Just from a general observation, you'd say, you know, that one of the other data's just wrong.
Right. And so we're saying that the PRISM biases are probably true, and the observations are probably more representative. And that's one of the main reasons for continuing this network.
Well, listen to that. Case closed. Darren's convinced.
Well, I could just wrap it up there. So this, this next...
Well, let's let you finish up here.
Yeah, this next case study is showing basically what was observed for individual year from PRISM, or what was observed and what PRISM showed. So the total precipitation versus the elevation. So as I mentioned earlier, somewhere like Sierra Nevada, you would definitely expect big increases in precipitation with elevation. So this first graph, the top is a wet year, 2005, 2006 was a wet year, and the bottom was a drought year, 2013, 2014. And so on the left there, in the wet year, you can see, and Chris and Greg actually mentioned this when they were out collecting the data, that they didn't really see a huge increase in the amount of precipitation at these higher elevation stations. And that shows up clearly here. The slope of that line in the top-left panel is very low, but when you look at what PRISM was showing, there's a much higher R squared, and PRISM really wanted to show the orographic effect, and PRISM really went with much higher precipitation amounts as you go higher up in elevation, which was not found in these observations. Now, for a drier year, the drought year, there's a bit of a better comparison, and they both sort of show a similar slope. To switch it up a little now, this is showing this year, 2016, 2017, just to look at another wet year, to see if the same thing sort of showed up. And we do see almost the exact same thing, where what we saw on the top-left observed, not a whole lot of change in precipitation with elevation. But again, PRISM wants to have much higher precipitation values with elevation, and that's likely because there's nothing, what PRISM is using are these values in the mountains to the west in California, where they do get a lot more precipitation at higher elevations, like the Sierra Nevada. Just a few examples here now of sort of how we can display this data potentially, again, if it were to be put up on a website, and what it looks like. So this is a dry year, again, 2013, 14, from the Smoke Creek Desert area. And so top-left is showing the PRISM observations, top-right is showing what the network is showing, and then on the bottom-left, we have the bias in inches, the absolute bias. On the bottom-right, it's the bias converted, you know, to a percent difference, a relative bias. And so we had a bit of a gradient here, where the northern part of the valley, PRISM was wetter than what was observed, and the southern part of the valley, PRISM was drier than what was observed. Now, anything on the bottom panels in that sort of, sort of that neutral yellow color is sort of relatively marginal biases, but any of those blue dots and the darker yellows are, again, these larger biases. And this is another example from Smoke Creek from the wet year, where we saw these really big wet biases in PRISM. So PRISM was showing upwards of 20 to 24 inches in some of these locations, and what was observed was more like, you know, 10 to 14 inches. So in a lot of cases, the PRISM data was showing an 8 to 10-inch bias for just one winter, or up to a 40 to 80% difference. Okay, so now I have a few conclusions and recommendations for the project. So in general, central, northern Washoe County are really lacking precipitation observations if you don't consider the network that I've described today. PRISM and other gridded data that make these spatial estimates, they rely on these observations, and there's really nothing out there right now that PRISM is using. So the Washoe County network has a whole bunch of density, spatial density, to the region. PRISM does an okay job capturing the variability, but there's these, again, very large biases. And during these wet years, PRISM really tends to overestimate the precipitation and the change with elevation. So some recommendations here for the project. The main recommendation is that we really want DRI to continue the monitoring and operations of this network. And over the past couple weeks, we've been in contact with some groups and let them know about this project, and they've seemed to be really interested. We actually contacted Chris Daly, who is the main developer of the PRISM group, and he seems really interested, and this is something where you can actually potentially take this data and put it into the PRISM model, and regenerate PRISM estimates for Washoe County or the whole region. And they, Chris tends to do this quite a bit, where what they find out about these new networks that weren't in PRISM already, and they'll go ahead and try to incorporate these networks into the actual PRISM model. We were in contact with David Berger from the USGS, and he definitely supports the project, and he's really interested in the potential of how these new estimates might be able to help generate some new perennial yield estimates. Overall, this is going to improve sort of just looking, just visualizing the near-real-time seasonal precipitation estimates, like I showed the map of what fell this year. Without the Washoe County network, we would really have no clue what fell up in those regions this year. We did, Greg sort of identified some potential stations that could be removed. There's a lot of them out there, and some of them are really close together, some of them are very far, hard-to-reach places. And so Greg's identified a few that could potentially be removed, and that might reduce the travel and the man-hour cost a bit. As far as some future analysis, there are some other recommendations. We can use these biases that were developed in this study to actually go back and bias-correct the PRISM data, and then you can actually obtain new spatial estimates for each of the hydrographic basins. Then we compare those new estimates with things like the Hardman maps, where some of these basins are still using those estimates for perennial yield today. And let's see what else, the new, yeah, then the new bias-corrected estimates could be used to develop these new perennial yield estimates. And as I mentioned, some of the maps I showed could potentially be displayed in near-real time as the data comes in for a sort of a public domain website for people to actually look at this data and use it if they want. And I think that was all I had. So thank you very much for the time.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. I can turn it back over to Chris, if you like, and I'll remind everyone that this item is styled for action, so.
Yeah, so we're, basically, we're looking to, looking for a recommendation of the Western Regional Water Commission to continue funding for this project. I suppose that because we're, this is open to discussion, if there was any further, if the commission was interested in having, looking into any further types of research that might be warranted for this, I guess that could be something that could be open to discussion. We could bring something back to you with regards to that. But with that, I'd leave it up to you for your discussion and consideration.
Well, we've had a couple of questions during the presentation. Do we have other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, Mr. Wessel, so I was the one who moved last time to table this, because I had one burning question on my mind that I still haven't heard answered.
Okay.
Why? Great data, I get it, better than PRISM, I get it. How does knowing how much rains falling in the Smoke Creek Desert benefit the ratepayers of the Truckee Meadows who fund this body? Where's the nexus that makes that project, as cool as it is, relevant to this body?
I guess that the way I'd answer your question is, it's important for the commission to remember that when you step onto this dais and you're here to consider things, it's not about your daily job that you do, it's about considering the 20-year project horizons and thinking out into the future. That's what this Regional Water Planning Commission is about. We don't necessarily think for the here and now, but we're looking down the road 20, 30, 40 years from now. Now, I realize that it's, can be difficult to look down that far down the road and think what will be necessary. These projects were started because it was recognized early on that... These projects were started because it was recognized early on that the basins that are being studied have the potential for water importation projects. The county in, has in the past required redundancy, well, I should, credit for waters and basins where they feel there isn't sufficient water regardless of the state engineer's estimates. It's going to be incumbent on us as a community and Washoe County to ensure whatever water resources are brought to bear for this community, that those water resources are valid and sustainable. No one else is going to do this for us. And it's, I think, I believe it's incumbent on this commission to work towards that end, and looking down, again, looking down the road in the future as to, you know, how would we deal with water importation projects coming down the line? How would Tumwa, for example, being more than likely being the recipient, being the one who's asked to help with some sort of water importation project, how will they be able to understand whether the perennial yields are accurate? Should they, should they, would you have to go do a 20-year study before all those types of projects could be generated? This is kind of a, I see where it's a proactive approach to understanding our water resources. As you can see, the number of, number of locations where we have observed data within the basins to the north are almost not, well, they are nonexistent. And this is, this is really just filling a data gap. And I believe that these will be useful in the future, and these, this was started, you know, almost 20 years ago with the thought that these basins may come into play. So I guess that would be my answer to you.
And...
I, you know...
Well, okay. You're not going to convince me, so I guess we'll stop.
Okay.
Okay, well, that said, go ahead, Commissioner Anlo.
I mean, I'd just like to give an example of where the value of this today could come into play. So you're very familiar with the North Valleys, Stead, Lemon Valley, Cold Springs. So there's a large development now, the bisects, Lemon Valley and Cold Springs, called Evans Ranch, that is looking at an option agreement with Bob Marshall's Water and Dry Valley and Bedell Flat. And one of the questions we've had a long time is, there's a resource there, but truly how much is it? And so this information that's available, and one of the things I'd like to say, it's one of my pet peeves, that this community is really good at collecting data, and we're lousy at doing anything with it. This is one of the first times I've actually seen a very minor effort really produce some valuable information that shows the value in the data that's been collected. We've got so much data out there, but we don't do anything with it. So here's an example today, when a developer is looking at investing millions of dollars, looking at Dry Valley water supplies, and we're concerned about it because Tumwa could be on the hook as a backstop for that developer. So whatever gets approved, we want to have confidence that what's there is there, because we don't want to be the backstop 10 or 20 years from now when, oh, we thought there was 3,000 acre feet, there's only 1,000 acre feet. Tumwa come to the rescue. And it's our ratepayers that come to the rescue, which we don't want to have happen. So a minor investment, a $20,000 a year to maintain this data, I appreciate the fact that you'd look at trying to improve the efficiency of that data collection and so forth. There's already a $100 million piece of infrastructure that's running through three of these valleys that could be expanded to put more water in, so it's not necessarily a new project. So from Tumwa's perspective and the limitations this community has on its water resource, $20,000 bucks a year is chump change to invest in maintaining excellent data like this. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $20,000 for DRI to continue the maintenance and operation of these precipitation gauges.
Okay, there's a second by Commissioner Hauck. Any further discussion by the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Price.
So what I didn't hear in the presentation, and I was curious about, is what is your guys' schedule? Are you going to keep the same schedule the county had all these years? I didn't see that in your presentation. So they're checked twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall type of thing? You guys will be consistent with that on all the gauges, right? Because he said biased an awful lot during that, and I imagine some of it was probably biased on checking it. Okay, so the schedule's the same as proposed as what the county did before?
It is, yes.
Yeah, our biggest challenge with doing that is, as we saw this year, getting some of the higher elevation gauges in the spring, because some of those, when I was last here in June, still couldn't get to, like on Fox Mountain. But they were taken care of shortly after that. So we are a little bit of a limitation for the weather, but our intention is to do exactly what the county has done so far.
Well, you know, we also fund the cloud seeding, maybe you can use the snowmobiles and ATVs from that to get to these or something, huh?
An ATV that I can show is very muddy today.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Is it permissible for me to interject at this point?
No, just kidding. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add to Commissioner Anlo's comments to Commissioner Drinkwater. My memory is getting pretty fuzzy at this point, but something I remember very well is a water importation conceptual project came before this, this commission. I think it was before you were serving on here, but you might have been paying attention at that time. And that project will remain nameless, and it may have been mentioned earlier in the discussion today. But, but there was a perennial yield estimate that was provided through the state engineer's office that I think was done with the USGS's help back using the Hardman map method. And then there was a Prism model estimate that, lo and behold, came in at three times the state engineer's perennial yield estimate. And, and there was, it created a sequence of events that was, that got to be uncomfortable on this commission at one time. You have one side arguing against the other about how much water potentially is in this basin, groundwater basin. And, and we were able to resolve it, but in looking at the presentation today, the dearth of empirical data in northern Washoe County that Prism was relying on, I think if we can get Prism recalibrated, or whatever the terminology would be, using this data, that would be a huge win for this, this method, for this region, because once the troa yield is committed, the only other way for our community to have, you know, sizable water supply, to supply for growth beyond that would be importation of water from, from another basin. So with that, I will close my comments, and thank you for your attention.
Well, thank you very much. I think we've had some good comments and discussion. So again, I have a motion and a second, and without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, motion carries with one no vote. Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to item number eight. We have a report on Lemon Valley flood activities and planning by John Flansburgh from City of Reno and Dave Solero from Washoe County, who stepped out a while ago and has not returned, I don't think, so I can turn it over to John Flansburgh, if you'd like. And I don't know if you want to speak from there or the podium, whatever you're most comfortable.
Whatever's the pleasure of the commission, so whatever, whatever be your pleasure. The comments are fairly brief, I mean, we can give a report on where things stand today. So as, in terms of, for the City of Reno and working with Washoe County, we have been continually measuring on a weekly basis the elevations. Obviously, with the closed basin, our biggest friend right now is evaporation, and that's, that's what we're monitoring, is seeing how quickly the different basins, the two lakes, Swan Lake and Silver Lake are receding. In, for the month of June, Swan Lake receded about five inches, so it gives you a kind of a feel for how fast, or not fast, it's going. In the month of July, we had seven inches of evaporation, so a foot in the last two months. So that's about what, what that's going. Obviously, when, you know, we've got these hot temperatures going today, so heat and wind are our friend. In Silver Lake, for those same two periods of time, for the month of June, it was six inches, and for the month of July, it was eight inches. So basically about the same amount of evaporation from each basin. Recently, Washoe County and City of Reno staff have gone out and looked at the roadway at Lemon Drive to determine the ability for us to make changes out there for additional access. As you recall, the HESCO barriers were placed out to protect to a certain level. Obviously, with the amount of evaporation that we're receiving out there today, the concern is going to be that we may see about three feet or so of evaporation for this summer period before we hit the next water year. And then that only gives us that, you know, that amount and whatever we have for freeboard that we protected to for the next year. Looking at historical accounts of rainfall, it appears that we likely, or, you know, a 50/50 chance, we're going to see water levels up to about where they were at the peak this last period of time, which we have protected, flood protection with the HESCO barriers and other methods, higher than those areas that we actually saw. So it does give us a little bit of room there, but the amount of effort and manpower and cost of taking barriers down and putting them back up, we're very sensitive to. So we're looking at options on Lemon Drive for removal of sections that we may be able to open up. That analysis is being completed, and we should have those answers back by, into day tomorrow. And if we are able to open up Lemon Drive and make it safe for the individuals, we will do so. And so that's, that's kind of the direction, or where we are with Lemon Drive. Silver Lake, most of the protections put in place around Silver Lake did not impede transportation, so the transportation corridors are still generally up. We are still seeing a fair amount of groundwater height out there, so that also is affecting the ability for evaporation and seepage of the entire basin. So that's kind of the report on where we stand and the efforts that we're making. We're continuing to monitor, we're working on what we can do for improving the situation with transportation out on Lemon Drive. I know that Washoe County has gone out and has looked at, you know, the primary detour that's set up is Deodore or Deodar, I'm not sure how they, how that's pronounced, but that's the road that's being used primarily to get in and out of that section, Lemon Drive, to go north on Lemon. And I know they've gone out and have done some blade work and stuff, but we know that if we can open up the actual road, even if it's only for a few months, that that will certainly make the situation better out there for just, just the transportation back and forth. And I, and Dave may have more to add, but he isn't here right now to add that. And I, and I suppose the, so the, to wrap that up, we're hesitant to remove those HESCO barriers or do other things, knowing that we're going to have to most likely have them right back up in place for next year, based on whatever type of winter we may see.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report. I think we've got some public comment. Thank you very much. Right. Okay, well, first, I'd like to take any questions or comments from the commission on this item? Are there any? Go ahead.
Yes, one question I have, or just kind of curious type question. Do you know, or how are you measuring the elevation of the lakes? Is it continuous recording or periodic?
So we have set locations so that they're consistent each and every week, and we're going out there and doing basically weekly measurements. So every, basically every Monday, we're going out there and getting a new reading. And, and we're doing that because we're also concerned that evaporation is great, but what happens if we get a thunderstorm and we add precipitation? And we've had a couple, you know, minor storms that have added a little bit or slowed down, slowed down the evaporation. And so looking at it on a weekly basis, it does give us a good idea how that would affect it, as well as how the evaporation's being affected.
Okay, well, the reason, I guess now that you answered that, I would mention out in Cold Springs, I started out in the winter measuring manually elevations every week or two of White Lake. And then ultimately, once I got a gauge available, I put a continuous monitoring gauge in, and that measures to an accuracy of about a hundredth of a foot. Utilizing, all that data I've, I've found is extremely valuable, not only to determine how much rain is falling by direct interception on the lakes, but also as to what's coming in underground or otherwise into the lake. And so I've been able to put together a, kind of a mass flow model as to what's going on in Cold Springs. If one was to do the same type of thing in Lemon Valley and Swan Lake, there's an opportunity right now, because the water is in the lake and it's going to continue for a while, there's an opportunity to get very, very valuable data for future projections. And I just wanted to point that out, I think there's, there's a, maybe it's something this commission should look at as far as funding to get that valuable data, because here we are, 50 years down the road that I know of, and we have a lack of data. It's almost embarrassing. It's really embarrassing, I would say, because I know this spring, there was projections made that, that these lakes might rise four feet. And so there was plans to anticipate that, and at the same time, I had a model that told me very reliably that White Lake, which I was studying, wasn't going to rise four feet. It was only going to rise six or eight inches, and that's exactly what it did, coming up to an elevation of, a peak elevation of six feet deep. So what I'm trying to stress is, I think in both Silver Lake, having done studies out there in the past myself regarding flooding, Lemon Lake, Swan Lake, whatever they're called, it's time to generate more data than just a, a measurement once a week is good. But one thing I found is, not to go on too much about this, the wind causes a big problem in taking manual measurements, because when it's windy, the wind pushes the water to one side of the lake, and when it's not windy, or when it's windy the other direction, it goes the other way. And out in Cold Springs, that's making a difference of up to three inches in the depth. It wasn't until I had the continuous gauge that, that I could look at these six, we take readings every six minutes, and you can look at those readings, and you can determine when there's wind and when there's not wind, and which way the wind's going. So you can pick the accurate measurements and then compare that to the evaporation, which is another step I've gone, is trying to figure out what's going on in the evaporation. I'm currently finding that the, I hope I'm not going on too long about this, but I think it's our opportunity to present, give some of this information that we know about. The ET gauges are projecting like six feet of evaporation, some of them, up to six and a half feet of evaporation. These are the gauges that we're funding, that the community's using to predict evaporation. So when I tried to use that data from the ET gauges, I found that it's, it's not usable for determining the lake evaporation. The lake evaporations are coming in about half of that or something. So it's kind of another subject, but it's important to talk about, because we might be overwatering the community if we're using these ET gauges to determine how long to run the sprinklers. But it affects our calculations on these lakes and trying to understand what we need to plan for in the future on these various dry lakes, because how much evaporation's going to be there. I'm predicting we'll see about, and these are just rough, I can predict more accurately than what I'm going to say, but we're going to get another couple feet of evaporation. Cold Springs Lake is going to be maybe down to three feet deep going into the winter, which is about 4,000 acre feet of water sitting there. The Silver Lake and White Lake, they're going to be going down, but they're maybe not going to be going down as to be going down as quite as much as we might project by evaporation. So it seems to me with regards to those lakes, there maybe needs to be more of a plan than just waiting till this fall and then trying to say, okay, hopefully it's not going to rain very much, or hopefully we're not going to have the 100-year rainfall this winter. So I know some of the community, people that are on domestic wells and have septic tanks where they can't operate their home because the water level in the ground is too high to allow the septic tank to function, there are some thoughts that we should maybe be doing something now to anticipate the freak possibility that we could have a big rain this winter again. There's a 50% chance we'll have normal rain, there's a 22% chance or something, we're going to have something that's more than normal and less than normal. If we want to remove water from Swan Lake and Silver Lake, there's some ways we can do it, but it takes a long time. For instance, the city has the sewer out there that can take so many gallons a day out of the valley, buying some more flood protection. If we start like now, maybe by this fall, we could have an extra foot of storage available.
Did you want to comment on that?
Or any of that, I can stop.
No, I know, I've got lots of comments. There were certainly some projections of what we might look at for the elevations that Silver and Swan Lake might get to. Those were certainly looked at in terms of what would happen if a warm storm hit the snowpack and what kind of runoff and immediate water you'd see in those lakes. We had the absolute best scenario we could have hoped for, for the warming up of the valleys this past spring, when we had all that snowpack up there and the warming up. I mean, that was, that was the best-case scenario. Going back to my high school chemistry, I believe that water evaporates faster as a solid than it does as a liquid, and so I think we probably took some advantage of that in the snowpack with the weather that we received. Going to the comments in regards to what we could do, I'm very curious of what your thoughts are in terms of what the City of Reno could do in terms of removing water from either one of those lakes or effluent or sewer, because I can only think of a couple short-term that would be pretty small in nature, so I'm curious to what your thoughts are, what we could do with that, and how we could make that work, because we have looked into that. So then maybe that's a good conversation we could have. Michael?
Yeah, and that brings up a question. I think for John is, with regards to the issue of how do we, how do we communicate on this? I see myself, for instance, I could go to John, go talk with Dave, and what I'm feeling is I can't do that, because that becomes like a serial communication among commissioners. And so how do we?
I was just, and you raised some very valid points, and I'm looking kind of overall at the role and function of this commission as it relates to the representatives of our individual members. And we're not really set up to be the lead commission or the advisor or the policymaker on these stormwater drainage issues. The role of this commission as it relates to stormwater, and I was just looking at the statute while I was listening to you, actually multitasking, I believe. You know, we're kind, this commission, we, you, are kind of limited to dealing with stormwater and the elements of the plan that are required to be in the plan, and you just finished doing that. But we had a long and kind of, it was a delayed, I would think, adoption, so we're going to be revisiting this here. When will we, when would we in the normal course of events start looking at a new revision of the plan, Jim, in 2019? So one more year and we will be there again. But I don't know that it, you know, because it is your responsibility, as the law now stands, to adopt a plan and forward it to the Western Regional Water Commission for adoption, this is, these are certainly, stormwater drainage and stormwater control certainly issues that are on your horizon as they relate to writing the master plan for those things. But as far as directing or coordinating the efforts of local governments, that's not the function of this board. So working within those parameters, this is a topic that this board should deal with, but I think staff will have to think it through as to how we bring items back for that. I don't see it as something that's going to happen to give any relief to the people that are affected by the current situation in the areas we've discussed by this fall or this coming winter or next spring. Those are just some thoughts off the top of my head, but it's something we're going to have to look at, and, you know, this is a topic that will be coming back before this commission, I think. But this commission's, I guess to summarize, this commission's power to do anything about these issues is fairly limited. Thank you.
Did you want to make any comments about Commissioner DiMartini's comments about serial communications or anything like that? Is there an issue with him contacting and speaking with some of our other commissioners? Or is that something we should?
That's something I should, I should think about, and in what context it occurs. So I may give him a private answer on that, but I'd like, that is a very good question, too, and I'd like some time to look into that one. Thanks.
Okay.
I would be interested in that.
Good. So this item, you know, Commissioner Solero was planning to present part of this. He's not here. He had to step out. I'm wondering, obviously, you're more than welcome to make some more comments if you'd like to, but we could also leave this item open for now and move through our agenda, the rest of these items, which probably won't take that long, and then we can get to public comment, because although this item is a non-action item, we do have some public comment cards, excuse me, and I'm assuming that some of those comments might be related to this item. So if the commission is amenable to that, we could leave item eight open and move on to item nine. Is that, but he's okay? No objections? Okay. So item number nine is the program manager's report, and I'll turn it over to Jim Smithman.
Thank you. Program manager's report contains a worksheet on projects that are funded by the Regional Water Management Fund. That's the first attachment to the report. We are working on rolling out or phasing out the projects that have essentially exceeded their funding or are about to, but it's taken a little bit of time for our accounting system to catch up. So you'll see that some of these are, probably should be closed, and we're trying to roll our new ones in that would show up with a, you know, zero expenditures so far, but some of those haven't hit either. So in this transition time moving between fiscal years, you may not see a perfectly up-to-date project list, but I'd be happy to answer questions about any of them that do show up here. Either I could answer or Mr. Wessel could answer. And then if we move on to the financial reports, I actually had produced two of them this year. The first one, you can see in yellow highlight is fiscal year 18, so that's just one month's of activity for the current fiscal year. And then the other is what I believe is pretty much a year-to-date fiscal year 16, 17 report. So not quite final, because we still have some POs open and some final invoicing that probably still needs to hit the books, but you can see there that we, let's see, our revenues didn't quite match up to what we projected. 1.48 was projected, and then we ended up with 1.43 actuals, but not too far off. And then our expenditures were significantly below budget, so we are in the black moving into the fiscal year that we're in right now. I don't have anything else specific to bring forward in the manager's report, other than to turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Jim on his report? No? Okay. I will move on to item number 10, which is discussion regarding possible agenda items for the September 6, 2017 NNWPC meeting and other future meetings, including possible direction to staff. And again, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you again. Possible agenda items for the September 6 meeting would include a report on the cloud seeding program for last winter from Desert Research Institute, and then also a report on non-Regional Water Management Fund funding sources, and then a proposal or some proposed alternatives for cloud seeding for the coming winter. Another item would be related to that, and probably good to have them on the same agenda, a report on the cloud seeding monitoring project. As you recall, DRI is installing kind of paired or controlled and within the influence and outside the influence of cloud seeding, rain gauges, precipitation gauges, and we should get a report on what's, the data's been collected and what that means last winter and then going forward, what their plans are. I think this summer, they should fully be, fully deployed on all of the rain gauges that are in that program. And then a report on Nevada Water Innovations Campus, especially the inaugural event that was talked about earlier today on August 24. And then maybe the Truckee River Information Gateway Maintenance Contract. I know that I'm talking with City Reno on what that contract is going to look like going on into the future, there may be some changes. So if that one's ready to come for a recommendation, that'll be on the agenda. We're also talking about maybe getting a Washoe ET project report. We haven't had one from that project in a little while. And then maybe talk about a stormwater program update as well, since that's a, that's a big chunk of the funding annually, so we haven't heard from the stormwater program in a while. So those are, those are kind of, the last two are kind of question marks, depending on working with the proponents. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Jim, is there anything that is critical for the September meeting that couldn't be moved to the October meeting? Just looking at the timing.
Yeah, well, the only thing that would start getting close to that would be the cloud seeding program, because we were hoping to move that recommendation on to the Western Regional Water Commission at their September meeting. But I don't think that those, the program wouldn't grind to a halt if those were put off until October. So short answer is no. Nothing's time-critical.
Well, it seems like we've got a lot of items on deck. Chris, maybe you should bring your popcorn machine for September.
That's how, that's how we get a quorum, Madam Chair, I'm sure.
And I, I'm wondering, were, did you try to, were you trying to locate Commissioner Solero?
I did not see him in the hallway, so I suspect that he's probably off on something he'd rather not be doing versus attending this meeting.
Quite suddenly, he left his laptop and stuff here, so.
We can put this back on next meeting for his report if he's unable to get back by the time we adjourn.
Okay, all right. Well, for now, let's see, we've made it through nine, 10. Now we're on item number 11. Do we have any comments?
Actually, back on 10, I would make the recommendation that we look at the items that Jim had mentioned, and we set that for the agenda for the October 4 meeting, and we do not have a September 6 meeting. That would be my recommendation. So I would make a motion for that, to that effect.
Well, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so there's a second by Commissioner Enlo. Now we can discuss it? Go ahead.
I don't think it's going to be here either live.
Okay. So we've got some scheduling conflicts. It's, that's right around the Labor Day holiday.
That is, that is the week, that Monday is Labor Day.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
With regards to that, is there any reason why we couldn't just move the meeting to the next week as an idea? I mean, we do that.
We can reschedule meetings. The following Wednesday, second Wednesday as opposed to the first? Just an idea.
It might also depend on ongoing meetings and the availability of this room, too.
For, for instance, the City Reno's council meeting will be on that 13th. So sometimes their council meetings move, so I'm not able to attend when that occurs, so.
Gotcha. Do other folks have scheduling issues with the September 6 meeting, or are people, are people amenable to canceling that meeting and holding October? I mean, and staff, do you guys have any further comments on whether or not that's feasible?
Just one, if we were to hold the September meeting on the second Wednesday, that makes our, if there's a recommendation that goes on to the Western Regional Water Commission, it makes it tight. It's doable, but, but, so just keep that in mind. And then, again, we're here to serve the pleasure of the commission, so if canceling the September meeting is the way to go, we can make, we can make all of that work, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Yeah, popcorn machine in October if we end up doing that. While we have a motion and a second, we've had some discussion. Are there any other comments, or would we like to have a vote on this? Ready? Go ahead.
I don't know if we're voting on the whole agenda or not, but.
No, no, we're just voting on, right now we have a motion about canceling the September 6 meeting and then moving these items to October. So did you have?
I don't have any comments on that.
Okay, all right, well, I guess I will call for the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we will plan on canceling September and moving these tentative items to the October meeting. Is that good for everyone? Okay.
We have a question on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
So what you're going to say, agenda, Jim, on the possible ET presentation that I think you mentioned, would it be, when you have contact with whoever's going to make that presentation, if you could ask them a question or be prepared to answer a question, question that I would have, is for them to address the?
The different gauges that are operating and the relationship between the values, how the gauges compare with each other, on the one hand, and also how the data compares with the current data that the state engineer is putting out as to ET rates. Because what I'm seeing in having a discussion with the state engineer's office the other day, I'm seeing a variance of up to 50% between what the state is using and what these gauges are telling people to water.
Those are based on PRIS.
I will admit that it's likely that this, that the ET gauges that we're talking about are more accurate. I think everybody admits that they are likely more accurate in their determination, but still, I think it would be good to understand that difference. So if I could go along with your request, if they're willing to try to address that, that would be interesting to me, at least.
I think we're going to end that.
Okay, great. On item number 10, are there any further comments on item number 10? No? All right. Okay, so now we'll move on to item number 11, commission comments. Do any of the commissioners have additional comments? No? All right. I will move on to item number 12, staff comments.
No staff comments.
Okay. All right, and now we can move on to item number 13, public comment. I do have several cards, and so I'll call them up one at a time. The first person is Ginger Pierce. Do you remember, Philly?
I want to do that, because I have something totally different that everybody needs to know.
Oh, no, this is, this is public comment. You can comment on anything, even if it's not on the agenda, but you have to come up to the podium and identify yourself. And you have three minutes.
Pardon?
You have three minutes.
Several of you, I'm Ginger Pierce, and I live in Pleasant Valley, and I observe the geothermal plant, and I have almost 20 years of pictures, and... And in, last year, in March, I observed what I thought was a blowout, because it was uncontrolled and it, when I looked out my window, it almost filled the whole window. And I thought, what on earth has happened? And I made arrangements to talk to Lowell Price. I've talked to him for like 20 years. And I also go down to Carson, to the water department, and talked to Steve Walmsley and some others. And they were mystified, because it said it wasn't on their books. Well, they finally got ahold of ORMAT and figured out what was going on. And I've been taking these pictures of wells that don't belong to ORMAT, but we didn't know who they belonged to, because the permits had elapsed for several years. And so, a couple of weeks ago, I went down with all my pictures, and some of you have these pictures, and they're dated, and they're time and date and everything. So, and I take three, so that you can see it's not a cloud. It's still there. So, I would like somebody to see if they can get some information, have them come, have ORMAT, or the ones who let their, everything lapse, is called Steamboat Development Corps. And the last thing I have for them is 2002. So, things have been going downhill up there. The fact that there are seven at least, maybe more, production wells in the city of Reno who, that have gone dry, I think, and another thing, the, Steve Walmsley said, most of these wells are allotted 8 billion 900,000 gallons of water, and there's like 60 or 70 of them up there. So, there's where your water went. And I'd like to have somebody have them come and tell us why. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker will be, and I don't want to mispronounce your name, Danny Kleos. Was I close? Sorry. Well, you can introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Everybody gets it wrong. My name is Danny Kleos. I lived out in Lemon Valley for 38 years, been a resident of State of Nevada for, since You guys want to open up Lemon Valley Road, which is a good thing. I'm not against that, but you have to make it safe. Leaving the Haskell barriers up is not going to make it safe. What if somebody has an accident? What if somebody has a blowout? Where are they going to pull off to? There's nowhere to go. The only wide shoulder is where the Haskell barriers are. The other shoulder, you go in to drink, because there's still water on both sides of the About the studies and evaporation rates and everything else, City of Reno and Washoe County, with both of their sewer plants, the Reno Sted Sewer Plant and the Lemon Valley Sewer Plant, are still discharging affluent water into that lake. How do you expect it to evaporate as much as you guys want it to and as much as I want it to? Because my house was one of the affected ones this winter. How do you expect that to evaporate if you're still allowing water to go into that lake? You did it all winter. You did it during the flood season. It's still going in there right now. And after looking over the drainage that goes into Swan Lake from the sted area, there's a lot of road runoff that goes in there. Silver Lake actually has overflow that comes to Swan Lake. Before all this, you guys talked about water. So, the record rainy year was in 1982, 83. This year is another record year. There's only about an inch and 3/8 difference between the two years. 1982, we didn't, we didn't flood. This year, we did. What's the difference is building out there. You guys, and this doesn't have to do with you guys, but that's where all the water's coming from. It has nowhere to soak in anymore. I hope, hopefully, Northern Nevada Water, Washoe County, the City of Reno, could all work together to figure out a solution, what you're going to do with the water that's there. In my time of living out there, that lake, three, maybe three and a half feet, four feet at the max that's ever been in that lake, has actually not dissipated over the year. But this winter, we better pray it's a dry one, because my house is going to go under again. And just a 15-minute rain the other week, a house on Idaho Street, which is three houses down from mine, was back underwater again. So, need to find something to do. And there hasn't been a study out there that I know of, that I've found, since 1968.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. And appreciate your patience. Our next speaker is Sherri Shorter.
Hi, I'm Sherri Shorter, and mostly I want to reiterate exactly what Danny just said. But in reference to Lemon Drive, I can understand where it may not be safe to open it, but you said that Deodore had been graded. It has not been graded since the 1st of June. You should try driving out there. You've got bumps and stuff at least this tall, and it has not been graded in a very long time, and it needs to be, needs to be some kind of road base put down as it is. It has to be very difficult for emergency vehicles to get in and out. We could go around the detour. It's 15 stops and turns. Very uncomfortable to drive it, to ride it. It's not really feasible for us to use that. I wish that Dave Solero was here. I would have liked to see what he had to say, because he talked about grading Deodore. He has not done it, or the county hasn't done it. He claims all of the equipments in Gerlach. Surely, you could get a piece of equipment down for a day, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have one remaining card for Kathy Branhorst.
My name is Kathy Branhorst, and I'm also the United States President. Number eight, report on Lemon Valley flood activities and planning. They're still putting up the water tanks up on the hill, and then they put the bullet holes in those water tanks, and of course, the water is going to run down the hill and into the area where the houses are, and it's going to flood again. And these people don't even have a chance, because the water will destroy their furniture. I saw this with one man who was living in a house, and he had to take all his furniture out, but it was all water damaged, and also mud damage, too, all over the furniture. So, he had to take that furniture and put it in the garbage, because the manager would not allow him to put it into his new home. Also, I just wanted to let you know, number nine, the report on the status of projects and work plans supported by the RWMF, which is the, it's, it's not going to be a very good plan, because you're not going to support your financial. Because what's going to happen is we have the problems with paying your, they just erased it, lawsuits, thank you. There are lawsuits, each and every one of them have lawsuits against them, because they cannot put the bullet holes in the water tanks and then allow those water tanks to go down into their homes. Their lawsuits are more than $20,000 per person. Oh, my God. Their lawsuits, if they're not paid, they can be destroyed, because they have no money to pay for it. They have no right to do this to nobody at all. Their clothes were damaged, too, and they have nothing to wear. And what they had left, their shoes were horrible, just awful. They couldn't even put their shoes back on because of the water damages and the mud. And the lawsuits are going to be against the person who did the damages, who did the other, you know, criminal acts, and this is against them.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Okay. So, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll go back to item number eight, which is still open. And unfortunately, I don't see Commissioner Solero. So, we could close the item, we could, what, put it on the agenda again for our next meeting if he wants to make any more comments, or would you like to make any further comment on that? Okay.
I think we'll just reschedule.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any other further comment. I know that there has been some discussion about how Silver Lake is draining into Swan Lake, or how there's some connection. There's a hydraulic grade line basically at the railroad tracks. That's, that's the difference between the two lakes. There has never been any pumping from Silver Lake over the, the grade line, if you will, into Swan Lake. So, I know that there's a perception out there that that has occurred, that's, that's not the case. We do have pumps set up out there. That's to pump water back that comes in, just like they do at Swan Lake. When it's on the opposite side, we need to pump it back into the lakeside, as we plugged up some of those culverts. But I just want to make that clarification on there, because I know that is a discussion point that's been out there. The, if Silver Lake had gone up about seven feet higher than it did this year, then it would have bridged over that hydraulic grade line, and it would have been flowing over, too. But again, that would have been seven feet of additional water. So, just, just that clarification. I don't have anything else to add to this item. I think we can go ahead and close it for now.
Okay. Well, if the commission is amenable, we can close this item, and then perhaps staff can just check with Commissioner Solero and see if he'd have additional comments to be brought back in October. Okay. Okay. So, with no further objection, I'll close that item. And we've got, we're finally on to item number 14, adjournment. So, again, if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Get up!